Next meeting of the school committee. The purpose for tonight's workshop is to select administration, teachers, as well as The purpose for tonight's workshop is to select administration, teachers, as well as community members who have expressed an interest in wanting to join us on the interview community members who have expressed an interest in wanting to join us on the interview committee committee in the search for a new superintendent. in the search for a new superintendent. So what you have in front of you is a folder with three different clipped packets in it. So what you have in front of you is a folder with three different clipped packets in it. You have one that's green. You have one that's green. These are letters of interest from community members that were sent to us. These are letters of interest from community members that were sent to us. Yellow is letters of interest from teachers that were sent to us. Yellow is letters of interest from teachers that were sent to us. And orange is letters of interest from administrators that were sent to us. And orange is letters of interest from administrators that were sent to us. When you look through, you will notice that identifying markers were scrubbed out. When you look through, you will notice that identifying markers were scrubbed out. So that is why there are some really big, black lines right through this. So that is why there are some really big, black lines right through this. So we are trying to make this- So we are trying to make this-
Who redacted this? Who redacted this?
Cheryl Cornelio. Cheryl Cornelio. She is one of our central office employees. She is one of our central office employees. So these were sent to her. So these were sent to, sent to her. She blocked them out. She blocked them out. I have the, I do not have the originals. I have the, I do not have the originals. So what she did was, as she received them, she scrubbed them and then compiled this for us. So what she did was, as she received them, she scrubbed them and then compiled this for us. What you'll notice on the bottom is there's a reference number. What you'll notice on the bottom is there's a reference number. Each one of these letters has a reference number. Each one of these letters has a reference number. So as they came in, she gave it a number. So as they came in, she gave it a number. That number is, the identifying person is in this envelope, which is sealed, which was That number is, the identifying person is in this envelope, which is sealed, which was handed to me and was sealed. handed to me and was sealed. She, and I'll be in all honesty, she went to hand it to me, this piece of paper identifying She, and I'll be in all honesty, she went to hand it to me, this piece of paper identifying everyone on here. everyone on here. I immediately took five steps back and said, please put it in a sealed envelope so that I immediately took five steps back and said, please put it in a sealed envelope so that we are trying to be as transparent and as honest as we can be about this process. we are trying to be as transparent and as honest as we can be about this process. So these are the people that are in alignment with this, with these references. So these are the people that are in alignment with this, with these references.
And she's the only one who's dealt with any of this?
And she's the only one who's dealt with any of this?
She's the only one who's dealt with this. She's the only one who's dealt with this. They went straight to her email and I can feel fairly, fairly certain that she did They went straight to her email and I can feel fairly, fairly certain that she did what was asked of her and to keep it very confidential. what was asked of her and to keep it very confidential. She was asked to keep it very confidential, not share them with anyone or anything. She was asked to keep it very confidential, not share them with anyone or anything.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate your process too and trying to remove yourself I just wanted to say that I appreciate your process too and trying to remove yourself so you can be as partial, or unbiased as, impartial, yes. so you can be as partial, or unbiased, as impartial, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I did, I will say, there was a moment of panic when she handed it to me and I thought, I did, I will say, there was a moment of panic when she handed it to me and I thought, nope, I cannot, I can't see that. nope, I cannot, I can't see that. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that. So my thinking and thoughts, and please let me know what your thinking and thought So my thinking and thoughts, and please let me know what your thinking and thought as well. as well. So I think it's important that we all look and do this in a systematic process that allows So I think it's important that we all look and do this in a systematic process that allows us to sort of say, let's all look at the letters of interest from admin first, or us to sort of say, let's all look at the letters of interest from admin first, or let's let's look at, and I'm fine with whichever order we wanna, we kinda wanna do this in, look at, and I'm fine with whichever order we wanna, we kinda wanna do this in, but but knowing that we need to select two from each one of these, from each one of these knowing that we need to select two from each one of these, from each one of these categories. categories. My thinking is that you kind of read, so let's say we start with letters of interest My thinking is that you kind of read, so let's say we start with letters of interest from administrators first. from administrators first.
I'm sorry, can we just double check the number? I'm sorry, can we just double check the number? You said two from each. You said two from each.
I thought it was two administrators. I thought it was two administrators.
No, it was four. No, it was four.
Four, sorry, sorry, sorry. Four, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay, I was- No, that's okay, I was-
Yep, sorry, let me back up. Yep, sorry, let me back up.
Or parents and four. Or parents and four.
Four, sorry. Four, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
Yep.
Sorry, sorry. So you will have to, and some of those, we won't have a choice. So you will have to, and some of those, we won't have a choice. Some of them, we did really only receive four. Some of them, we did really only receive four. So those will be the four. So those will be the four. And some, I think we might just have hit the mark. And some, I think we might just have hit the mark. So let's do, in my mind, we kinda read through these, and as far as administrators go, I'm So let's do, in my mind, we kinda read through these, and as far as administrators go, I'm not feeling, I have not read them ahead of time. not feeling, I have not read them ahead of time. You've got the pack at the same time, the same time that I did. You've got the pack at the same time, the same time that I did.
It's only four. It's only four.
Reading them, if there's four, we've got four, done, right? Reading them, if there's four, we've got four, done, right? That's, that's my thinking. That's, that's my thinking.
Teachers also only got four. Teachers also only got four.
I was gonna say, in teachers, we only also have four. I was gonna say, in teachers, we only also have four.
And this is everything we got? And this is everything we got?
This is everything we got. 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 Yeah. Yeah. Yep, so I reserve my own thoughts around that one, but this is what we've got. Yep, so I reserve my own thoughts around that one, but this is what we've got. So if we have four letters, four letters of admin, that would've done. So if we have four letters, four letters of admin, that would've done. But I do want you to take the time to read them, because someone took the time to write But I do want you to take the time to read them, because someone took the time to write these letters. these letters. So I think it's important we do take the time to read them and understand what they're So I think it's important we do take the time to read them and understand what they're going to bring to the process. going to bring to the process. So I'm gonna give you about 10 minutes, read through your letters of admin, and then we'll So I'm gonna give you about 10 minutes, read through your letters of admin, and then we'll move on to community members is probably the one that we have to make some selections move on to community members is probably the one that we have to make some selections for. for. So we'll make some decisions when we get there. So we'll make some decisions when we get there. So I'll give you about 10 minutes to read through admin, just so you know where, what So I'll give you about 10 minutes to read through admin, just so you know where, what they wanna bring to the table when we look through. they wanna bring to the table when we look through.
Thank you, admin, for the four people that did this. Thank you, admin, for the four people that did this. We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you. Absolutely, thank you. Okay, so it looks like everyone's done reading admin. I want to make sure that I have this done correctly. So as far as admin goes, we're looking at, so just double check with me. We're looking with reference number, number one, number nine, number 14, and number 15. Do I have those four?
Why are these numbers like this? Does that mean there were 15 people?
As they were received. Okay. Yep, as they were received. Okay? One, nine, 14, and 15. So then at the end, we'll open the envelope and we'll assign names to all of these people. Does that make sense?
I wonder if we should do this executive session wise and look at those, because I'd like to make sure that this is a good cross-sectional of all the schools, because if it's all central office, for example, is that the best, is that what we're looking for? And I'm not, I'm, I have no idea who these people are. I mean, the same thing for the teachers. It's like, is this elementary, middle, high school and special ed, are they all presented equally?
I think we gave them the opportunity. We gave them the opportunity to, and this is just my opinion-
Right, no.
But we gave them the opportunity to go ahead and, you know, put their name in the hat as well. We've only got four, so to, in my mind, I'm thinking four really wanted to be a part of this.
And this is the process we agreed on as a group to follow.
Yeah.
I am disappointed that we only have four.
What's that?
I said I am disappointed we only have four.
Curious, you know?
Right, right.
I don't question the fidelity to it. I just was, you know, again, it's like, do we want-
Right, you wanna make sure we don't have all elementary, all secondary. I can understand that. At the same time, I want people who are, who wanna be part of the process to be a part of the process and not be forced to be part of the process simply because they're at a certain grade level, I guess.
People are busy.
Yeah.
I mean, I think people have other commitments, but I would've liked to have more than four, but I guess at this point.
We've got four. Yeah, yep. So I'm gonna go, I think we're gonna stick with the process that we decided at the, at the onset of this.
Good.
Okay. All right, so moving on from admin, let's take a look at teachers next, which is the yellow. Teachers, and again, we have one, two, three, only four. Let's read what they wanna bring to the table for us. Let's read what they want to bring to the table for us. So pull whoever six is, put them back in with Teachers, and we'll go back to Teachers in just a moment, okay? All right. You have your four? You have your four?
I do.
Okay.
So there is one in here that said she's also a substitute teacher.
Number six.
So should she be...
He or she.
He or she, I don't, I know, I'm thinking she, but he or she, should they be part of the teacher pool, or...
How do you want to consider them? In my mind, they're an employee of the Auburn School Department. If you are a substitute teacher, you have gone through, you've filled out, you've filled out an application, you have, you're on payroll at some point. That's my thinking, my thoughts. So are they eligible?
I agree with you. I wrote, "Are they eligible in this category to be, as an employee of the school department?"
I think they would be.
As a question.
I don't know. I tend to think that they're more of a community member. I don't know how many times, like, you can sub once and be a substitute teacher, so...
Well, she said that, is this the one where she said she substituted short-term and long-term? There's one in there that said that. Oh, yeah. I have substituted both long-term and short-term.
That is a good point.
So...
I would have to tend to agree then. That they're an employee of the Auburn School Department.
Yeah, I feel like they should be in the teacher.
Do you think that person should bump out somebody that's teaching full-time in the schools?
They're both teaching.
I mean, if they sub once every two years, I guess, I would rather have a teacher's perspective.
I'm just going by what is written here as far as long-term and short-term. I'm assuming that it's not just a one-time deal that they're substituting. By what is written.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a question that I wonder if we should be putting them in the educator part as opposed to just the parent part, because they are wearing two hats. I mean, I'm not saying I would vote for this person, I'm just saying...
No, right, I just...
This might be a person that isn't... And then we could have a, I don't know, could be more...
Open, Brian, what are your thoughts?
I think my recommendation is to pull number six out, go back and review the teachers and see if... If there is four out of the, and review all five, and just pick four out of that.
All right, let's do that then. Pull number six.
I agree.
So pull whoever six is, put them back in with Teachers, and we'll go back to Teachers in just a moment, okay? So should that one trump someone else?
So they're staying in that category, they can't fall over on the community member, correct?
I think we're putting them in the member, in the, in with teachers.
Teachers.
And then don't go back to look at your teachers one yet. Let's just stick with community members right now. Let me know when you've got your four. If anyone needs more time for their four, for community members.
I'm all set for community members.
I need another minute. Nope.
Sorry.
It's not easy. I just, I guess I just want to reiterate that I personally, if we only have four teachers in our search, I would much rather have a teacher that's in the school every single day, wearing that hat. So like, that's my concern. If six gets picked over one of the teachers that's working 40 hours a week with the kids every single day, I don't know what you guys, what your thoughts are on that, but that's my concern with pulling them, because, yes, she's a teacher. I'm not saying that he or she's not a teacher, but they possibly could not be in the school for a year.
Yeah. So do you want, let's just whip around and just decide, are they a community member? Are we looking at them through the lens of community member or educator? And I don't think there's a right or wrong answer to this. I really don't.
Well, I think it would be fair to put them into both.
Sure.
Yeah. I think it would be fair to put them into both.
Pick them or not pick them.
Right.
You just can't pick them in both categories.
Right, right.
But I think it would be fair to put them in both, because, and again, I think it's important to have... Right, they are both. And I had brought up this question at one of the workshops, well, could I submit a letter? Because nobody's gonna know it's me, and I'm a board member. Could I be, if you chose me as a community member and a board member, then...
Could I then be both?
Sure. So, okay, I just felt like I need to say that, because I personally would rather have four teachers, full-time teachers that are in the classroom every single day representing, and I could see the teachers coming back at us. Again, I wish we would have had more than four, but I could see somebody having a problem with that.
So consider, so you do want to consider them both?
Also, yes. And also too, as in defense of the substitute teacher, she does have her own unique experience there too, that that can also be part of, even though it's not a full-time teacher, but, and I'm not saying I would vote for her, I'm just saying that...
No, right.
Yes, she's a substitute teacher, but she's still a teacher.
Yep, yep.
Now, I don't know where number six is.
It says six at the bottom.
Brian, thanks.
Six, okay.
Okay, so six can be in our community members, and six can be in our teachers.
Yes, I think that's what we've just decided. Six is considered both, can be considered for both.
I think I'm good now.
I think you're good. Pam, let me know when you feel comfortable for your four. No, don't worry.
And do you just need top four? You want it one to eight?
Top four.
Assuming if there's a tiebreaker, we'll review those ones individually.
Say that again.
If there's a tiebreaker, we'll review those ones again and reorder them and follow the next process, right?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Do you have the whole pile?
I do, I think so. I have three so far. I've picked three.
Take that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Is this four?
Yes.
Okay, you have your four, Pam?
Yeah, I got mine.
Okay. So at this point, I've written down all the reference numbers for anyone who was a community member. And so what I'm gonna ask you to do is just number off, I'm gonna keep a tally. Tell me your four numbers, and then I will do the tally at the end, give you the results at the end, okay? So who are top four. So Dave, we'll start with you. What do you...
I have numbers two, three, eight, and 12.
Two, three, eight, 12. Okay. Dan, you're gonna be my, like, two, three, eight, 12. Pam, how about for you?
I have 10, three, two, and eight.
Okay, Rose?
I have two, three, seven, and 12.
Okay, Brian?
Uh, two, four, 12, and eight.
Ace?
12, six...
Twelve, six, two.
And four.
Twelve, six, two, and four.
Okay? And I had twelve, eight, four, and two. You, Dan?
Two. Eight. Twelve.
Okay, so we have, take a second, six votes for this one, three votes for this one, five, six, seven for this one, five for this one.
One.
One, three, and two. So, at this point, number twelve has six, uh, number two has seven votes.
Number.
Twelve has six votes. Number eight has five votes. So, I am going, we have a tie between number three and number four, so I'm gonna ask you to pull both of those, please. Reread number three and number four. We'll decide between number three and number four.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna stay with three, too. This person has children in the system. Although this person has three grandchildren. Who was the one that didn't have? There was one that had no children. Yes. Seven. We think seven, right?
All right. Mr. Simpson, start with you. Number.
I'm gonna stay with three.
Okay. Pam?
Three.
I'm gonna stay with three.
Four.
Four. I'm going with three.
Four.
Okay, so four to three. So, reference number three.
Can I, can I just ask why people chose three over four? Because there's, I thought it was night and day, so I was just curious. Anybody can share their thoughts?
Children in the system.
Children in the system.
I can live with either one of them.
I mean, I know there's grandchildren in this one, but this one, she, this person, whoever he or she is, has a stake in the game. They have children in the system that are in the school. That's why, that's the only reason, I think.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, let's make sure we've got these correct at this point. So, I have reference number.
Twelve.
Received six votes. Number two, which received seven votes. Number eight, which received five votes. And the end being number three, which received four votes. All right, let's go back to teachers for just one moment, so that we can add number six.
Okay, so who are we picking for parents?
Two, twelve, three, and four.
Twelve, two, eight, and three for community members.
Two, twelve.
We put number six to consider, eight.
Number six went back into the teacher pile, so at that point, I'm gonna ask you to look at number six, and do you feel number six has stronger qualifications than anyone else that we've already referenced? So, does number six bump out any of the others? So, I'm gonna ask you to do the same that we just did with community members, so choose your four, and we'll go back through, okay? We'll do the voting for us again. It is hard.
Just want to be like, everybody can just do it.
Yep.
Got your four, Mr. Wilson.
You're on TV, you can't say that.
I know, I'm so sorry. Why do I have more?
Beep! Yeah. Nate, please get on that.
Why do I have so many?
Because you're mixing piles. Five.
No, I didn't mix the piles. Did I?
There should be five.
There should be five of them.
Oh, yeah, okay. What are these? It's been a rough day.
Do you want the original numbers?
Yeah.
Five, eleven, thirteen, sixteen, and six.
Okay, sorry.
All right. All right. Mr. Simpson, start with you. What are your four?
Five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen.
Pam?
Eleven, thirteen, sixteen, and six.
Rose?
Five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen.
Okay, Brian?
Five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen.
Faith?
Five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen.
Mine are the same. Five, eleven, thirteen, five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen. Deanne?
Five, sixteen, thirteen, six.
Okay. So, we're sticking with the original four, five, eleven, thirteen, and sixteen are, will still remain. Okay. So, now that those have been decided upon, here are the reference numbers that go with each one of those numbers. They will be notified, I will notify them tonight, either through email, phone, probably through email after we're done our budget workshop, so in no particular order. For admin, reference number one, Mike Davis. Number nine, Scott Aneer. Number fourteen, Michelle McClellan. Number fifteen, Shelley Mogul.
Can you give those to us one more time? I'm gonna.
Yes, absolutely. For admin, we are looking at Mr. Mike Davis. Number nine is Scott Aneer. Fourteen is Michelle McClellan. And fifteen is Shelley Mogul. Okay. Everyone set for teachers? Teachers, we have Travis Burley. Number eleven is Mackenzie Govin. Did I say that right? Number thirteen is Sean Rice. And number sixteen is Courtney Pierce. Community members. Number twelve, Katie Boss. Number two, Mary Gypson Perry. Number eight, Keith Wenzel. And number three, Pat Godier, uh, sorry, Victoria Langillier. Sorry, Victoria Langillier.
Can you name that? There was Katie Boss, Mary JP.
Let me go back through. Are you community members?
Yeah.
Okay. Number twelve, Katie Boss.
Yep.
Number two, Mary Gypson Perry. Number eight, Keith Wenzel. And number three is Victoria Langillier. Okay? All right, everyone, thank you so much. That was the process of, now we have the interview committee set, in addition to the school committee. So, let's call this workshop to an end. We'll take a ten-minute recess before we get on with budget workshop. Thank you, everyone. Could I please have these back? Thank you. We have to give them all back. Don't worry about them being in any particular. Don't worry about them. On the envelope or the folder? Yeah. Slide them right in there. Thank you.
Hey, Karen. Question for you.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we could now, now that we've selected? Is there a way that we can know who the other people were, in case they wanna reach out to other people? You know, like, they may wanna reach out to you to, you know, obviously, they're not on the interview committee.
Right.
But if you knew who it was, you may be able to, you know, or are we just gonna keep that?
I think that there's gonna be plenty of opportunities for community forums and those, so if they do want to be involved, then, you know, there will be opportunities.
Right. It was like, Rose, start the words right out of my mouth. Like, we've got four community forums coming up. We've got, you know, the survey was sent out. There's definitely some opportunity that while they were not, they may not have been selected for this opportunity, they, we're trying to offer as many opportunities as we can.
It is a big time commitment, too, as far as this goes. So, you know, folks that might have been interested in it.
Yeah.
You know, backed up because of the time.
Yeah. Yeah. Michelle, did you like? Okay, thank you. All right. I'm gonna just stretch, use the restroom, now's the time.
Yeah.
You can bring snacks. You should bring snacks.
Can we have, like, a snack rotation?
I know, we should.
No! No softball, mom! No soccer, mom!
There can be a rotation. Rose, it's your turn this week. Rose, it's your turn this week. Rose, guess what? It's your turn.
It doesn't feel like much of a rotation. I can nominate a few administrators to add as well. Actually, it's best. Mackenzie. I don't even know them either. Mackenzie.
Babe, you can stop by any time.
What do we do now?
To sign. Well, you probably won't have time to get through the whole.
All right.
All right.
Wow, that's intense. That's intense.
Yeah.
Hi Katie.
Welcome.
Hi. How are you? Okay. I have some, that's yours. Some piglets here. Do you have some? We'll share. Thank you. I'll give you one. Thank you. My brother and I are leading this one. I just got to make sure to give it to her. Good to worry about it in the middle again. God. I wouldn't mind getting stuff there. Brendan's not coming this year either. I'll have hope you with me now. Okay. Okay. So, we have a lot of information we're giving you this evening, and we're going to go through, this is really focused on cost center one. This is really all we're talking. Brian, do you have a handout?
I have a, I have a question to start off before you dive into cost center one.
Sure.
So, on Monday, we met with the auditors, and the auditor just pointed out that we were basically under budget by, what, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I wanted Adam to kind of speak to that, the context, you know, is that normal? What's the percentage? Like, just before we dive into the budget, I think it's important that everybody knows kind of why that, what that number is, why it's there, and, and just to kind of set some context, other than just in, you know, from the auditors.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that, Brian. So, the, yeah, the total, total budget was under expended by about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year on a budget of, actually, let me look at the number. Forty-three and a half million dollars, which means we spent over ninety-eight percent of our budget. So, if someone were to ask me a year and a half before the end of the fiscal year as I was preparing my budget, what would you, where would you feel really good about bringing that budget in? I'd say between one and two percent would be, that would be like the sweet spot for me. I'd feel like, you know, we didn't budget too much, we budgeted enough, et cetera. As you can imagine, it's always the balancing act of how do we budget for what we need without budgeting more than we need, and we're budgeting for things that are a year, a year and a half out. So, in the context of the size of our budget, I felt very good about how much was left over. I wish I could guarantee that every year we'll have 1.75% remaining. Obviously, I can't do that. But in terms of whether I feel like that was a crazy high number or a crazy low number, I think it was, was a pretty good number.
Sometimes it's been higher, sometimes it's been lower, but, yeah.
Yeah. Does that help?
Yeah, I just thought it'd be good to give everybody some context of, you know, other than just, you know, when you hear, well, we're on a budget by eight hundred and fifty thousand, what does that mean?
Right.
Before we dive right in.
And you had that information when we did the transfers. So, we went over why we had to transfer funds from regular instruction into special education. So, that was part of the end of the, of year process. But it is a fund balance. You use quite a bit of fund balance to balance your budgets. So, that's a healthy end with eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It helps keep the fund, our fund balance is a little over three percent, and the auditors talked about that, and that's where we need to be, is at the three percent. Schools shouldn't be carrying more than that. So, he, they felt good about what we were feeling healthy about our fund balance, because you never know when something may happen, and because you count on it in your budget balancing. But that's an excellent question. I'm glad you asked, yeah.
And I think, and we discussed this the other night, but any unspent money lapses to fund balance automatically. That's what happens to it.
Correct. It's called undesignedated, because we haven't designated for anything. Okay, good questions. All right, so now, so, anything like that, don't hesitate to flag, and, because I get on a, you know, roll, and it's in my mind, and just raise your hands.
This is not going to be our only time talking about this, right?
Tell you why.
Like, we're going to be talking about cost center one for quite a while.
Oh, you will, because you'll, well, we'll talk about it at the end of cost center one. But yes, and this is your first look at cost center one. You have to get through eleven cost centers. Right, exactly. So, this is you.
No, okay. I just want to make sure if there's something that I thought of.
You're going to take all this home, and then you might send me an email and say, you know, for the next meeting, I'd love to know more about this. Okay? And our next meeting for next week is just the one-hour workshop, and we're going to focus on special education cost center two. And then the following Wednesday is another workshop like this. So, any questions that come out of tonight that I may not have the answers right here, we'll bring forward. So, absolutely.
I'll have a million questions, but I won't hold us up tonight.
Okay, yeah, well, and what you do is, that's why you have sticky notes. Write them on the sticky notes, and you're, and hand me sticky notes at the end, okay?
Thank you.
All right. I'm hoping, I'm anticipating a lot of your questions, see? Trying to think ahead of you.
I've got them.
Okay.
About the, like, the green energy, when I asked you.
Okay, yeah.
Questions, yeah.
It's okay.
We're, we're, we're good to answer stuff.
Questions are welcome as part of this whole process.
Exactly. So, part of, the first part of this is giving you information that came up in some of the identified priorities. And when I gave you that priority sheet, that is every single sticky note. So, I didn't say, well, just because one person put it down, I discarded it. So, I tried to highlight. So, there'll be times when somebody may be asked, you put that sticky note, could you talk to that? And, because you might, you might have specific things around your sticky note, okay? So, I'm going to first dive into class sizes. I'm going to talk about ELL, pre-K, interventionist, teacher salary scale, we have information on that. I had PBIAS return investment I'm going to highlight. I did not put a slide on that. And then we're going to really dive into the details, okay? So, the first is class sizes. So, I have a handout, and we're going to focus on the first handout. Please do not go to the second one. I know it's tempting, but I don't want to sidetrack conversation. So, if you could stay with me on the first, that would be great. So, this is not about ELL, this is about class sizes. So, over February vacation, I asked the administrators to please make, update these, this information. So, they're looking at their current enrollment and adjusting for next year, the number, where they're going to put their teachers. And one of your priorities, a lot of, there was a lot of discussion on class sizes, help for class sizes, and, and so forth. So, after they put this together, you can see, if, looking at East Auburn, their primary is averaging seventeen, although their second grade is twenty-two, their K and ones are fifteen. And what they've done there is they do combinations, they work with their staff on how to best service that group of students. Then you can see their intermediate is averaging twenty-three, and you can see, so what I do is I take the total number of students in that, in grades three through six, so they're ninety. She has four teachers. I divide them, and I get twenty-three. So, the average is twenty-three. So, the numbers on the right, PAM is per grade. So, you can see she has a high sixth grade anticipating twenty-seven in the class, okay? Then we move, I'll move across. So, Park Avenue School, you can see there, their primary is averaging eighteen, with the, again, second grade at twenty-one. Then you have the intermediate averaging twenty-one. And then you can see the overall school averages at the bottom. Then Walton having an average of nineteen at the primary and eighteen at the intermediate. And then Fairview averaging seventeen in the primary with a high of nineteen, and the intermediate at twenty. Sherwood Heights averaging sixteen, and then nineteen. And then Washburn averaging twenty, and twenty, and twenty. So, what I did is, in response to saying concerned about class sizes, and this is just my thoughts, you can change it, is I looked at classes that were twenty-five or more, and we put an ed tech two in the budget to help those classes. Not to say that if those positions make it through the budget, and we open in September, and there are different classes that are higher, we could move those positions around. I'm only telling you what led to putting in four ed tech twos into this cost center, which is one at East Auburn for sixth grade, one at, two at Walton for grade four and grade six, and then one at, I know they know it in the audience, at Park Avenue, at Sherwood Heights, grade five. Yeah. So, that's what I did to get four ed tech twos in there to reduce, to have help where there were twenty-five or more students.
This is in addition to what is already in the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Right.
Like, I know the kindergarten classes at Washburn each have a tech in the room. Right?
If they did, their tutors.
Their tutors, okay.
Okay.
So, it's for additional ed techs in the budget, correct, Katie?
Okay. Should be Sherwood.
Right, for this, yeah.
Okay. Right, so sometimes there are extra classrooms because of special education needs that would warrant a tutor to help support. But that was a good question.
It's just trying to understand what different positions are being called here.
Exactly.
Other districts, and all of that sort of thing. Okay, thank you.
So, these are ed tech twos for regular elementary.
Regular elementary, that's why they're in this cost center.
Okay.
Yes. Excellent questions. You might say something different, but I think you're going to have to wait and see what is the impact of four ed tech twos in the budget. Right. Because there's more to come, right? So, just, I'm giving you background knowledge, and then we can dive deeper. Now, on one of the sticky notes was about ELL. So, what I did, first I want you to know, students are, and I know I'm reading this, if you want me not to read it, I don't need to read it. But what I put on this slide is how a student qualifies to be an ELL student, how many students are identified ELL. If I put monitor, that's because they've exited, but they cannot be released for two years. They're monitored to make sure if they need any additional support, they would be pulled back in again, okay? So, you can see our numbers. We have a district ELL coordinator, Melissa Hodgkins. She, so what she did, she provided me a list of all the ELL students in grades K six. So, on your next page, so you can turn to the next page that I gave you, what I did is I shifted the ELL students to their home school, and then I reduced Park Avenue. I think you really, you know, this was one person sticky. You really need to decide, is this a route you're going to be looking at? Because you also have other programs. You have EDD, you have your BI classrooms, you have a speech and language classroom. So, you have programs in many of your, in your elementary schools. Also, I wanted you to know that April Perkins, who's the Department of Ed, who heads ELL, visited our program on Friday. She told Melissa it's a model program for the state. It's one that they hope other districts look at, because it's the best way to use your resources to provide the services your ELL students have. There was also a recent DOE memo put out that comes from the Civil Rights Chapter, what would it come, Office, thank you, that they are really looking at that when your students are identified for direct instruction, your ELL students, and depending on their need, you need to offer them the same amount of core time in ELL services. So, if we were to do ELL at all our buildings, we are now spreading out our resources and having to provide a certain level of instruction, and that wouldn't be cost-effective nor efficient to meeting our ELL students' needs. So, I think if you're really serious about it, you can see the numbers and impact, you would have to read district, because Park Avenue would drop to two hundred and thirty-eight students. So, you need to fill the school, you just built two new classrooms. One. Two, you'd have to look at whether you have room at Washburn, who would have two hundred and eighty-five students, so you need more classroom space. You have Walton School with twenty-five new students, you have to have a classroom for that school as well. East Auburn and Fairview would not be highly impacted, nor Sherwood Heights. So, you, you have a lot to consider here. So, if it's something that the school committee really says, this is a direction you want, you, you've got to, first of all, talk to the families. I don't believe I've heard from any ELL family interested in a move back to their home school. We haven't done a survey. The other thing is, Robin Fleck and I have been discussing over the last couple of years, putting a program together for New Auburn because of the numbers in New Auburn. And so, I've talked to Melissa about that, and Lila Mitchell about that. Cheryl and Mike Davis were told yesterday that we're going to have further conversation about whether a teacher in an ed tech from Park Avenue moves to one of their schools to offer programming in New Auburn. That we can do without raising the budget, or disrupting a lot of families, giving people anxiety. We have families that have been Park Avenue since pre-K. So, we have to watch how we deliver a message, get our information before we make, and I think we should talk to the Department of Education, who has touted our program, and, you know, making sure we are doing what's best for our ELL population. But I was asked for it, so I did the exercise.
Can you explain this, they're leading at Fairview.
Yes.
So, says one is fifty-seven.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Grade two is fifty-three.
Yep.
Somehow it comes out for a total of teachers of ten and one-seventy. I don't know what the one-seventy, but then there's.
They have ten teachers in the pre, they have, okay, what I did, did I, did I do the number wrong? I hope not.
Maybe it should be one-ten, but.
No, if you go to the first page, you go to the first page, they have ten teachers in their preschool, in their primary. So, I just kept the same number of teachers. It's one-ten, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so it's one-ten.
Okay, it's one-ten, I didn't add, yep.
Then grades three through six, it's zero?
They don't have any ELL. This is, I put the ELL students that are at Park Avenue at Fairview. They have two ELL students that are at Park Avenue. East Auburn has two students. Park Avenue has eleven. Sherwood Heights has twelve. Washburn has forty-nine, and Walton has twenty-five. If it doesn't add up, I apologize.
I understand.
No, I mean, I, we, we look at these all the, so I'm glad you caught that. I'll correct it. I also, because I thought I might be asked, we have a lot of students that are not in their home schools. We have two hundred and thirty-nine students that are not in their home school beyond your ELL population. Okay? Two hundred and thirty-nine. That are local, not in their home school.
What's the percentage of that? Like total students, if there are two-hundred-and-thirty-nine, what's the percentage?
I didn't do, I mean, somebody could, you could add that up for me, Adam. Adam will add it. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
We can add up, we'll add up the totals.
Is that, just elementary?
Yeah, it's just ele, oh, yes. But, yeah, it's elementary.
So the sixty's just missing.
Right, exactly. It's all, yeah. Yeah.
Good point.
So Adam will add it while we're. So that's stuff to take home, think about, that's information.
I'll look at it later, don't worry.
Well, he's, he, he has.
Gotcha.
Right, okay. The other question was, um, pre-K and, uh, so I, I have this information for you Now, just to make sure, uh, you understand that Chrissy Lenahan, who's a full-time pre-K teacher, receives a stipend, um, to oversee our pre-K program. We used to have a full-time position that oversaw our pre-K, uh, program, so Chrissy wanted it noted, that she would love that, and, and so I'm gonna say to her, I understand that and it would be a great addition, um, but it's not in the budget. Uh, so, but she does a fantastic job with what she does, um, she works with families, she makes sure that, you know, we're following to get our families signed up, assigned to schools. When we have a waitlist, she, she works with families, so she does a lot of work. She oversees team meeting every Wednesday, pre-K meets, um, to talk about programming, curriculum, things that they're, um, working on. So I, I did want to tell you that with Chrissy. Um, also, just so you know, we always look at what are the trends around our pre-K. So right now, we have, um, one session at East Auburn, as you can see with, with the handout. Um, we have one session at East Auburn, we have four sessions at Fairview, we have two sessions at Park Avenue, two sessions at Sherwood Heights, two sessions at Walton, and two sessions at Washburn. And we are very pleased that they, they are looking very healthy this year. Um, last year, they also were, and we had an increase in our ED two-seventy-nine in pre-K enrollment. That's good news. That means, um, that we're getting the kids early, you know, especially Washburn, to see that Washburn's are full is excellent. Um, so we have waitlists and, um, you know, Fairview has two very large daycares in their district. One is Toddlin and one is Tenderhearts, and they influence a lot of trying to get their students that may not be in Fairview District into Fairview's pre-K. They are told that Auburn students always fill the pre-K slots first, and then as we come into the new school year, we will fill them with, um, students that are not in Auburn. But you know, once we accept them into our preschool, right, pre-K, they're gonna ask to stay for kindergarten, they're gonna ask to stay for first grade and so forth and so on. So that's how we get a lot of our out-of-district.
Do you think it's a legitimate reason as far as like childcare?
That's their childcare. Tenderheart and Toddlin is their childcare. But if they're not Auburn students, they have to wait. We're not, we're not just going to do that.
So we place our Auburn students before.
Absolutely. Yeah, Auburn students have priority.
Okay, so there would never be an Auburn student at, on a waitlist and a non-Auburn resident in this program?
The only time it would happen is if an Auburn family signed up late and we've already placed students.
And do we play, if one school, so if there's a waitlist, say at Fairview?
Yes.
And Park Ave has open spots, we allow them to go to Park Ave?
We do, they have to provide their own transportation.
Transportation, okay.
So a lot of this is kids moving around and so forth, yes. Um, at one time, we had four sessions, we had three sessions at Sherwood Heights because of a bubble there, and then when we didn't have it, we backed down off, off of that. Okay? Just like, uh, Fairview had only two sessions and we added so that they have four sessions. So we do move numbers around. So right now, we don't see a high need to add another session because we're, we wanna be at capacity. If I ca, if Chrissy was saying to me, we have twenty-five kids on waitlists, and we have fifteen kids on waitlists all the time, then we'd have to be talking about adding and we would. Okay?
What about Ed Tech support? Does each one of these programs have an Ed Tech?
They all have Ed Techs, yes. And similar to kindergarten, if there is a student with special needs coming from Child Development Services and stuff that would need support, we know that ahead of time, we put support in the classroom. So sometimes they have an Ed Tech and they also have a tutor. So like Ryan Fairchild right now has been visiting all of our incoming Child Development Service students, and we do have a higher number this year for next year than we do have this year. So he's already working with our preschool and can, understanding what are the needs coming in. Okay. So I wanted to have that, so that was on your list.
I have that percentage for you.
Okay, yeah.
Rose probably already did it. Thirteen point seven percent.
What?
Thirteen point seven percent.
A lot. Yeah. Right. But you have to understand, we, we, when all the superintendent agreements come in, we talk them out and, and place them. So if you pushed everybody back, you couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Run, right? So a lot of the discussion, principals talk all the time, Walton and Sherwood work hand-in-hand, East Auburn, Washburn, and Park Avenue work hand-in-hand, Park Avenue and Fairview work hand-in-hand. So there's a lot of conversation. If they're filling up, they'll say to a family, I know you, you should register here, but I'm telling you right now, we may need to bus you to this school. And families, all in all, are pretty good about it because they're not tied in. It's when a family's been with us in one school for four years and you say, well, no, you're not, that, that gets harder. And we have relationships with the families. They know our teachers, they know the principals, so you can understand, and I know a lot of you have been on superintendent's agreements, so you know. It'd be hard to tell you to go to your home school, so. Interventionists and coaches were on your list. Coach positions are in cost center five, okay? But because interventionists are in cost center one, I'm combining that to give you kind of a picture. So what we looked at, as I met with each principal and we talked about what they have for support, there were schools that could obviously use some additional support, I mean, they all could. They all have arguments that everyone could, needs more support. So looking at, um, the needs, the highest needs, so I, what I put here is Auburn Middle School right now has an interventionist and they have a, an instructional coach. That instructional coach also works with students. So in fairness, it's not just, that Auburn Middle School coach isn't just for teaching coaching. I've been over there. That person is also working with students, um, helping them to be supportive in their school, in the, in class. Edward Little has one coach. Um, they made a decision as a staff to have a teacher come out of the classroom and serve in the coach role. Their sole coach, and they're doing a fantastic job, Nikki Fenley, uh, working with freshman teams, um, really aligning curriculum, uh, in instruction and assessments to really have a strong foundation for our freshmen. So she's done some incredible work there and that, and then she also works with other teachers who bring her in, especially around teacher evaluation, so they've had an observation, they've been, received feedback, and now Nikki's called, can you help me with this? So she's a great resource to the high school. Um, East Auburn has a point-five Ed Tech Two for support, uh, and then that person's role serves also as their librarian, as an Ed Tech Three. And so it's a way to have a full-time employee helping support students and run our library. We are going, we need to move that position into title, into our general fund. So where you see moving, we've gotta move them, um, from title, that's because when we do projections for our title grants, our title grant money doesn't increase, but our salary and benefits do. So we do our projections and then positions need to move in. And every year, Faith can attest and Dan, every year we move positions in from grant money because that stays stagnant and salaries increase. So when we talked about moving the, her Ed Tech Two into general fund, we're gonna make that an Ed Tech Three position. So we're gonna keep it Ed Tech Three because she is doing more of an Ed Tech Three responsibility. She plans the lessons for her students that are receiving intervention, so we need to make sure she's classified that way. Fairview has one interventionist, we're recommending and proposing one more, another intervention for, for Fairview. Park Avenue has two intervention, and I'm gonna say they're positions because at Park and at Washburn, there are two people who fill one intervention role. So they're teaching first grade halftime and the intervention halftime. So Adam and I would be teaching first grade, I'm in the morning, he's in the afternoon, and the, and in the morning, he's the interventionist, and I'm the interventionist in the afternoon for the school. So it's one position, two people.
Just take a moment and explain what, what's an interventionist?
Okay, so, excellent. So they, um, all have what we call response to intervention teams, so they meet and go over their student data, and they talk about what students need beyond tier-one instruction. So what's going on in the regular ed? And are they, um, not needing proficiency, partially needing proficiency, needing proficiency exceeding? So they have data walls. All the data, all the students are listed, there are all, there's, their information's listed, and then these interventions take students that are, does not need, partially need, and they give them extra instruction. So the teacher is the first line of defense, obviously, and then those students are pulled out for thirty minutes usually for extra reading, vocabulary, math, it's whatever that student needs to help boost them, change, to close the gap. And they, 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 their caseloads can be up to fifty students, forty students, so depending on small groups, one-on-one, and they start working eight-thirty to three o'clock.
I see.
So, no.
And what's the difference between an interventionist and a coach then?
Okay, so a coach, so you can see here where I put interventionist coach, we have a coaches, we have literacy coaches, and fifty percent of the day, they're working with the adults, right? They're helping them with their, um, lessons, their maybe modeling lessons, uh, they're giving them feedback, and then the other half of the day, they're interventions. They're taking small groups, one-on-one, to work with students. So they do both. None of our elementary coaches only coach adults. They also coach, they also intervene with students. So if you said to them, don't inter, only coach, they, they would all be screaming at you, then you need to add more interventionists because we just lost that support. So we do, I would say fifty-fifty, most of the time is the coach's role. So why we call them literacy coaches is they have, um, master's degree in literacy, they've gone through coach's training through University of Maine system, they get overseen by experts, they meet, Karen can talk about, she meets with our literacy coaches, so she knows our literacy coaches very well because she goes to the meetings. Um, so they have, they have real expertise that they, not only for our teachers, but for our administrators, they're, they have that ability to, uh, help in a lot of different ways, uh, in the building. So to say they're only coaches wouldn't be, wouldn't be describing their whole role. Okay?
They provide professional development.
Right, they, they do the professional development on Wednesday afternoons, exactly. They do a lot of that. Correct.
So Katie, when you budgeted for them, you budgeted sixty, so you budgeted at the top? You budgeted sixty-seven?
We bud, we budgeted where we budgeted all new positions. We put them at step four MA.
Yeah, sixty-seven includes benefits.
Yeah, includes benefits, right. Yeah.
Okay. So you budgeted for step four with masters?
Yes.
Just to piggyback on the interventionist, I had, one of my children was behind on reading and the teacher, you know, reached out to me, and at first I was a little, you know, having them pulled out, how's that gonna affect them in the classroom? You know, are they gonna be made fun of? But I will tell you, my child looked forward to that time and thought it was the greatest, you know, and it, it didn't take long, and then she was back, you know, at the classroom level, so it's just that extra, mm, but. And sometimes it would be with a group of kids from other classes, so I love that approach.
And also, I am an interventionist.
Oh, there you go.
So I'm in public schools, so I'm an Ed Tech interventionist, but I do the same thing, thirty-minute groups, eight times a day. Yep, it's busy. All day.
Yeah. So that's why there are three there for those schools, Fairview Park and Sherwood Heights. Okay? And you can see why, because of the support at the other schools, so it's trying to, it's trying to be fair and equitable across the district.
But is there a need across the district? Would you say, I mean.
Oh.
To me is trivial, I.
Right. Yeah, you could, um, Sue Doris has done an audit to say, how many would we need to really hit every student all the time and it would be triple this? So I started with three because we added, we added one to Sherwood Heights, we've added some at Washburn during the SIG grant, so we had not put one in, uh, Fairview, Park and, and, um, Sherwood also needs additional support. Sherwood is your second-largest elementary. Whether we're gonna be able to hold on to these positions, that's gonna be something we'll have to talk about. But I want you to know what is in the current, what is in the proposed budget, okay?
Move point-three-five from title?
So Washburn has a position right now that is part, is paid by title, point-three-five, so we're making it whole in general. So right now, the other three-fourths of the position is in the general fund, so we're just making that person whole in the general fund. Okay? Good question. Teacher salaries, another person asked, um, so what we did is, what I've done, and I hole punch, is there's a, um, a tab that says, uh, additional information. After the first page is the teacher's salary. So, um, what we just put there is what the schedule for teacher's salary is next year. On the back of that paper is our steps and experience, because if you're hired in Auburn with zero to four years' experience, you are step zero. So step five, step two is five years' experience. They get to, they do move up though. This is to place them. So if I come in with four years' experience on step zero, next year I go to step one. If I come in with zero experience, I start on step zero and then I go to step one. Every year, everyone moves up. Okay?
Can they skip? Can they go up two?
No, they may not.
They would like, you can't pass.
Because it's, uh, contract. It's all contractual.
So, so a great teacher, next to a mediocre teacher, they get the same?
Correct. Absolutely.
We can go back to that word fair anytime you'd like to.
That's right. That's, that's, that is, uh, negotiations, that's union, and you can see the percentage that they do have, they make between steps.
Um, one other question, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, does that include benefits?
No.
Good.
No, no. That does not include benefits. Um, also, so you know, in year three, which is ne, the following year, our zero is at the forty thousand mark. We will hit what is required by state law. Yes, you're welcome. I was waiting, I was anticipating you might say that.
We're hitting all the benchmarks each year, so there won't be any need for a state aid for that.
Yeah. That was part of negotiating this contract, we wanted to make sure we were there, so that's, yes. All of our contracts, sorry Pam, just so you know, all of our contracts are online, so you can go online and read our contracts, Pam.
What's BA plus thirty and MA plus thirty mean?
Excellent. So bachelor's, obviously, is a BA, so plus thirty is ten credits, uh, ten classes past your BA, and then it's ten classes past your masters. So somebody can come in and say, I'm working on my masters, and they often will have the BA plus thirty. Um, I know when I was teaching, I, I went quickly for my B, you know, my plus thirty to then go to my masters. Yeah. Because you can see the jump between the lanes. I don't believe at this time we have anyone with a doctorate, correct? The only, well, we have speech and, our speech pathologists are on the doctorate degree. So, um, the union agreed with us that they have a license, higher licensing, and, um, in order to, uh, bring people in to our speech needs, we agreed to put them on our doctorate. Then do we have another person? Beyond the speech?
That, that may be what I was seeing.
Yeah, yeah. The speech pathologist.
So the base, step zero BA will be up to forty thousand, that's what you're saying?
A year after. This is next year's salary.
Oh.
And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, it goes to forty.
That's a state mandate, that's.
Yeah, that's a state, yes, it is. Yeah, state law. I don't think it's exactly, is it exactly forty?
Yep, yes.
No, I'm, I'm talking about.
Our, our.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes.
Um, I can tell you in a second.
Yeah, so Adam. Yeah, so Adam can tell you what the starting will be in two years, okay? And then you can see, once a teacher reaches past the fifteen, fifteenth step, they get a three and a half percent increase, yeah.
Does that continue every year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's their percentage.
That is disgusting.
When you, when they negotiate?
It's ridiculous. It's not a livable wage.
Okay, cost center one summary.
Sorry, just, it is exactly 40 in 21, 22.
Yeah, okay, right. So, and when, when you, if you've served on negotiations teams, right, always trying to raise the salaries that taxpayers can afford, right, and that's where the challenge is. Um, so cost center one, I, this is the summary, and then we're going to go into, um, what are the changes in cost center one this year, okay? So cost center one is, um, was last year 18 million, and you'll see it right on the slide. And then the proposed is 19.6. So there's a, a $1.2 million increase to this cost center. Now, I wanted to make it important because I think it's going to be a challenging budget, okay? So, right, so to just maintain current positions with no additions. So without those four ed tech twos, without those three interventionists, there would be an increase of 745,002. Okay, we only received in state subsidy, an additional 365,418. So we would have to raise taxes just to cover the maintenance, and this is only cost center one.
Yeah, the 365 is for the whole budget.
Right. Okay, so.
And it doesn't even cover close to cost center one?
Covers less than half of maintaining our current positions in cost center one.
Correct, so I just, I, I need you to keep that in mind as, as we work through this. So I'm going to close this, or I'm going to put down. Now, if you want, Adam, you could, I guess for the public, shoot what we're going to look at. If you go to your first tab in your notebook, these are kind of the summaries of what's going on with what you're going to dive deeper into, okay? So the first page is the changes in additions to staffing. So it's pretty much kind of what I've already said to you, but you can see the total. So the new positions would be 419,111 dollars, and that is with benefits. And that's a teacher, um, uh, step four masters, and it's adult with child health insurance. So that includes adult with child health insurance. The ed techs are single, okay, for health coverage. They don't, they don't have an option to have other insurance, it is single. So that's how we calculated what would they, the cost be, all right? Then you can see the positions shifting from grants is 74,348. To me, that's maintenance. So when we set our number of 700,000, that included these positions because that's maintenance. If you don't do it, you don't maintain.
Can you just say that again for health insurance for ed techs?
Single.
That's it? So if there's an ed tech that has children, they cannot get insurance for their child?
They can get insurance, but it's the single, it goes towards it.
The district only contributes toward the single.
Correct.
What is, what is the difference?
I can get you, I'll get you that.
Okay, I'm curious, that's, it must be significant.
So let's say if they had a family plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get you that number.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then that becomes money that you're taking away from essentially their salary because they have to make it up if they don't. I don't know, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, and they're underpaid.
We, we often, they, they.
They're paid even lower than our teachers, and they still get the, so not only are they getting the extra benefit, but they're getting more money.
Yes, correct, yeah. And that will be a contract negotiated next year. And we did work hard, Rose, to raise the ed tech pay. Just, if you look at the contracts from last time, I mean, we, we raised it significantly.
The next time, can you, um, give us printed contracts so we can add in here? Is that possible?
Sure, yeah, they're online as well.
I mean, I could print, but.
Would like the printed contracts in the book?
Yes, please.
Sure.
I can't, does everyone want that, just because it's a lot?
Yeah, it is a lot.
I don't need it, it's online.
Yeah.
I'm happy to print them for you or for anyone who wants it, I just don't want to overkill if everyone doesn't need it.
Or we can have a set available, and Rose, if you need to look at it or you want it, that's fine, no problem. Okay, and then, um, the bottom part, Auburn Middle School has been really working hard. Uh, Bob Griffin, working with his staff, and, uh, one, to really look at instructional time. Two, to really look at the needs that they're seeing without impacting the budget. So what you're seeing at the bottom of this is things moving out of cost centers. But what, 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 um, Auburn Middle School is doing is their librarian position at Auburn Middle School has fluctuated between being an ed tech three and a librarian. And so they're moving to the ed tech three again. That position, so the ed tech three position we're looking at, they have, and they're going to put it there. They have an unfilled ed tech two position for special ed right now that they're going to move into general ed to help with family consumer science. So to have an extra hands-on deck when they're using the power tool, the power machines and sewing machines and things that Auburn Middle School Family Consumer Science does. Um, and they're, um, it's not just Family Consumer Science, I'm not calling it right, Bob, what? Tech lab, thank you, the tech lab. So what he wants to do with that library position is have a social worker. So instead of having a librarian, to have a social worker. He's also, um, instead of having French and Spanish, talking about the French teacher position being an interventionist. So he's taking some, his current staffing, and he's looking at how to best use that staff to meet the needs of the students and, and their programming. He has brought to his concept to his parent group that meets at breakfast. Um, and he did that this month to get their feedback, and I think you got a pretty positive feedback on that, yes. So he not only brought the new schedule proposals, he's also brought the position proposals. So he's getting feedback.
There would be no French teacher, just a Spanish teacher?
It would just be Spanish, yes.
In a community that's French-based?
Right, and we talked about that because we knew somebody would say that. So we, we, we talked about being French-based and really what they're doing, they can do a lot of the French cultural stuff in social study, other places.
They do the language.
Right, and they're not doing enough to be French one or Spanish one and skip that to Spanish two. So because it's more introductory, and that's what they're going with, the Spanish. And Bob talked to Shelley about that, I don't know if you want to discuss?
Yeah, and I, I can just.
You didn't come, I know, sorry.
Microphone.
But there was a lot of discussion on that, Pam.
Hi there, um, so I, I can give a little bit of context, and, and I am happy to also come back and talk a little bit more in detail if, you know, or answer any questions and things like that. What I am, have really worked incredibly hard to do in preparing this budget is to see if there are better ways I could use existing resources at the middle school to better meet the needs of our students. So when I think of what, what that really needs to be, you know, one of the top things that comes to mind is, is a social worker, and we all know this. The social emotional needs of our students are dramatically escalating and interfering with their ability to learn and access their education. You know, so we need, um, more, more hands-on deck every single day to work with those students and those families. I think that's an absolutely essential piece. Um, our library class, as it has, as it has been offered, the teacher has been in the position of being asked to do two full-time things. Teach a full-time course load and have a vibrant, dynamic school library. And, um, it's impossible to do, you know, and, and it is not a fair position to put that person in. And when I had done some asking as to why the library was a class, I was told that it, it was created several years ago because they needed an additional place for students to go. That's the wrong reason. You know, that, that isn't focusing on sort of what's in the best, you know, for kids. So I believe with an ed tech three in that position where next year they would not be responsible for teaching library classes, we could hit those targets and that work through other courses, like their English Language Arts and other places, um, that we could once again have an open library. Right now, our library's not open. If a student wants to come in and check out books, there's classes going on all day. And, you know, this, this would allow much greater access, I believe, I believe better support what our library would, would look like. Looking at the intervention needs that we have, we have a, uh, interventionist position this year who was, um, dealing primarily with academic intervention. He's doing the, um, the literacy, the numeracy, he's doing, you know, really working specifically with students on targets and, and, and gaps and everything like that. Uh, we're seeing tremendous success with that and collecting lots of data to support how much that's working. But we also know we have a tremendous number of students who are everything from struggling, um, with behavior to struggling with poverty, to struggling with trauma, to struggling with truancy, to, you know, and, um, our guidance counselors are working, they, they cannot possibly work any harder. You know, what I want is to have another interventionist who is doing some classroom teaching around social emotional learning. You know, is in classrooms doing lessons, you know, to support, uh, every student on, on that stuff. And this is all based in sound middle-level practice. But I also want to raise the services we're providing our students to a whole different level. I want someone that is helping to send food home with our students who need it at the end of the day. Um, we have a wonderful green closet that is helping, um, provide hygiene products and clothing and everything like that. Um, we, we need even more. I, I want, um, we're, I want athletic gear available to students who, so they, you know, now, you know, so it goes on and, you know, and I could talk a whole lot more about what we need more with intervention stuff, but that person would be doing it. And the foreign language program at the middle school and, and, um, some middle schools still have foreign language. Um, many do not any longer. And at the Auburn Middle School, it is an exploratory offering, you know, that focuses on things like cooking and culture and, and things like that. And the French that is taught, the vocabulary is Parisian French. You know, so it, it is not, it has not even directly been tied sort of to what was. And, and looking at, because I don't want to lose sight of our local history and, and our families and everything like that is we've looked at ways that we could revamp the social, some social studies curriculum components to, I think, do an even better job of embedding our local culture and history and stuff like that even more so than what they've been getting with, with French. And in, in speaking with, um, a guidance counselor recently at the high school, they had shared that, and this is, is pretty typical, the number of students, um, choosing Spanish, you know, when they get to the high school and around the country is dramatically changing. And, and from what I understand and have read, you know, in the, in the lifetime of our, our children in the not-too-distant future, um, they will be living in a country where Spanish is the most dominant language spoken. So, um, I, you know, I, but I want you to sort of hear me, I don't want to lose sight, and I value the French, the historical component and everything like that, and the value, and we would find ways, and I've been talking about how we would meet all that, and I even think better than it is now through that very brief French exploratory course that we have. I didn't mean to talk so long.
Oh, that was excellent, thank you.
Point of clarification, you want to hire a clinical social worker to teach?
No, 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 so the, the social worker would be.
Different position.
Yeah, would, would, would be working.
You felt sustaining position, i.e. not an employee at a school?
No, the, the so, the social worker would be an employee, would be a school employee, that would be a, a position.
What would, what, no, if he or she could generate revenue, where would that revenue stream go?
No, we haven't, we have not done that.
Certainly could, right?
We, we would, I, I'm not, I don't know.
Reimbursable service.
Yeah. Yeah, those folks do do that. Our social work, like, um, we have a, we have a substance misuse counselor at Edward Little that we have, and they, they, they aren't doing that. So I don't, I would have to look more into that. But the social workers we have on staff that work with regular ed students, we have not done that. So.
So in order to get reimbursement, we have to.
Come on, Brian, Bob, you're, you're dismissed.
In order for it to be a reimbursable service, the student would have to be special education identified. It would have to be indicated in their IEP. And I believe in the state of Maine, reimbursable services are OT and speech. I think social work services can possibly be reimbursed, um, but I think it has to be connected to like a day treatment or something. But it's, you know, again, it's not just like any kid that comes in who qualifies for main care will be reimbursable, it has to be connected to the.
If they diagnosed, they would though.
If they have, if they're, if they're, if they have.
The only reason I bring it up is it could create a revenue stream.
Right, we, we would.
To pay the position.
Like health, like health affiliates.
I can do some research and get back, we'll do some research and get back.
That's the only reason I brought it up.
Again, I believe reimbursable is through an IEP.
Correct, we'll just research, we're going to do some research.
We'll check.
We'll do some research. We don't know the answer, so we'll get the research. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll check with them.
It just seems like a solid idea to try to bring some more resources in to help.
Right.
I see where you're going.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Right, you're talking about a revenue stream, no, I, I definitely hear you.
To bring in those resources to pay for other. The position, so that we have that person and it's not coming out of our budget. But they're still doing those things that we want them to be doing, like the social work and the, all of those things. So those students that need to be serviced are getting those services.
Yes. Yes, right.
We, we do have social workers that are attached to Spur Inc. And does that, those things. I think the difference is, there's a difference between providing counseling services through Spur Inc. and providing school-based social work services, there is a distinct difference. School-based social workers, the things that Bob's are talking about are issues identified that impact school. If you have reimbursable service, the clinician themselves determines what is talked about. And more in a counseling aspect, that would be oftentimes home stuff. But a school-based social worker that's paid by the school district can target specific issues related to school and home. So there is a distinct difference.
Very familiar with this.
Because we do, we do, we currently do have that, I think that that's one of the distinctions that Bob is looking at.
Yeah.
I would say, I would say investigate it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Make care reimbursable, give five.
Right, um, they are under the teacher contract, these positions, so just, but we'll, can't hurt, can't hurt to ask. Um, and then, so you can see, as we just reiterated here, that just to maintain current staffing is here, okay? The next page is what are the changes in cost center one not related to staffing? So one is the retirement stipends, we made an adjustment, looking at what we've been doing for retirement stipends. Um, how many retirees have we seen? And so we adjusted that number by 26,000.
Can you tell me what a retirement stipend is?
So, yes, so when a teacher retires, they can get a certain amount of days paid for their sick time.
So like payout?
Payout, this is, right, retirement stipend is a payout.
And those are all in a contract?
Correct.
Yes, they are.
They all are articulated in contracts, yes.
Just another point to add though is this pool sort of covers, uh, sick payout for any other position in the entire budget as well as if people leave mid-year with vacation days that have to be paid out. So this pool, although it's put in cost center one because that's likely where the bulk will be, would cover anything else if we had a, a non-contract, a non-union position as well. This money is meant to cover that too.
So that was a reduction there. Then you see substitute teachers, so it's the same type of thing, is we moved our substitute pay for next year to $100 a day. And so looking at calculating how much we've used for substitutes, um, adding that 10% difference, that will be the increase. We've added $34,000 to that line. We also are returning $5,000 back in the budget that was removed last year because Jim Horn is working extra hard and may even have a lead, and I see him here. Um, so this is opportunities for students. We have had a course at Sherwood Heights, um, from UMF on, uh, early education, a way to get students funneled into thinking about becoming teachers. And it was very successful. What Jim has struggled with is getting an instructor to do it because it's kind of part-time, it's, it's a commit, a certain commitment. So even a retiree says, well, I, I still want to go to Florida for a month or do, you know, so. know, so it's a struggle. But we put it back in with hopes to have it run next year. Nuzella is a subscription that we had free this year. It is a wonderful resource for teachers. They can go on there and so if they're teaching Civil War, for example, they can put in Civil War. It gives them articles about Civil War at different reading levels. So a teacher has a resource right there to fingertip. This group of students is going to read this article, this group of students is going to read this article. So we all are getting the information, but in, in a readable material. So it is being put in the budget as a district cost at $26,000.
Hey Katie.
Yes.
Is $26,000 licensing?
Yes.
Are they license fees?
Correct.
Do we have a utilization rate?
Yes.
Like how much, what, what percentage we're using, you know, versus not?
Does Nuzella do that? A participation rate, a user rate? I know the, some- Yes.
Yeah, like, you know, we're, we might have 10 licenses and we're using it 100% or-
So Shelley can get that information, yes. We, we do that with all of our apps and that's, that's some of the discussion. It's like the next one. It's a perfect lead-in. So I X, so IXL was an app we used and teachers are saying, I'm not sure this is the, the investment we want to make. Although you will see IXL, I think in one building is still being purchased, but we've moved to MobiMax. So MobiMax does what IXL did for math, but it doesn't math, English, science, and social studies. So we, last year budgeted for MobiMax. Well, we budgeted for an opportunity, the licensee came in more, so we paid for it through software that, monies we didn't use. So we need to make sure we have the actual cost of MobiMax. So there was a $6,000 difference in that. So you'll see an increase in that cost in software. So when you see software lines, you'll see that's gone up and one of the reasons is MobiMax. Okay? Then you'll see an increase in textbooks. So you notice on the left, Adam did an excellent job. I, I would like to take credit for this beautiful handout, but it is not mine, it is Adam's. He put the code so that you're looking for it, you can find it, all right? You'll at least know what code you're looking at. So we're looking right now, Shelley's working with, talking to the Auburn Middle School math teachers around a math textbook. We've gotten a lot of feedback. Can we please look at a textbook at, at the middle school level? So they are, they're investigating different options, listening to colleagues, listening to other curriculum directors, listening to teachers. They are having teachers explore different programs. So what she did is she budgeted a high-end rather than coming in low and then not having enough money to, to purchase what they want, what they want. So there's $35,000 to purchase textbook from math. How much will that buy, Shelley?
That would cover us implementing a new math program for grade seven, eight in the same year. It's kind of, a lot of the new textbook purchases are a little bit higher than you might expect because they, almost every textbook now offers like a digital component.
And they must have kits, kind of kits, bundle kits?
Yeah, and so this is a, the program we've looked at so far also has like, it has like a student workbook component kind of approach, moving at illustrative math right now. And so that, that cost would be for the intelligent-
So about 520 students?
Yeah, and I actually learned that it also is designed to be like a, a cost for six years for the workbooks and the digital platform, so.
Yeah. So approximately, what, Bob, what are your numbers next year? I don't have it top of my head. Is it five, about 520?
About 520.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Go ahead.
I have a question. What is this new math program? And we're spending $50,000 on a new math program?
That's absolutely one thing that I wanted to go off of. We haven't had a meeting of the curriculum subcommittee and I would like to look into all of this.
And that's what Shelley-
And just understand what the curriculums are and what the need is and-
Exactly. So the 50 K implant new program offset by reductions from FY20 and EL textbook lines. So what we do is we look at all the textbook needs. And so putting that there is that you would see $50,000 in textbooks and 35,000 is for the new math program. So there are other textbook needs that come up, like replacements of textbooks.
What is this, I, I guess, I know we're doing budget, but this new program, I mean-
It's for the, for the middle school?
Yes, I realize that.
Oh, sorry.
I guess what I'm, I'm trying to say is that's going to cost us $35,000 is the new program, not that, well, the textbooks will come with the program.
Yeah, yeah.
But this program, why are we changing the program and what is the, the data that's saying that this is going to be the better program?
So. There hasn't been a program selected, just so you know.
Yeah. Right. This is just me, and just being that we're in the process of, of determining whether or not we want to move to program something more than Alex.
Okay.
Right? Because, you know, Bob can speak to this, but the, the middle school was part of, they had a NELMS. NELMS stands for-
The New England Middle, New England League of Middle Schools came in last spring and it was a incredibly comprehensive thing. It was a multi-day site visit. They spoke with every single teacher, they observed every single class, they met with focus groups of students, they met with focus groups of parents, they, you know, it was a very comprehensive, you know, report that they did in a, one of the sort of key aspects of that is they recommended us really taking a close look at what math, math looked like at the middle school. And, you know, and aside from that, you know, and I, I think we all know, and I certainly say, I am, it's not acceptable where our math scores are. You know, so I, I think we really need to look at how, how we are doing things and is there, are there better ways to do it?
Yeah, and-
So right now, you have a couple of teachers working with you.
We have some samples, we're looking, we're talking to other districts. And so that, the sort of recommendation or the desire from that group would be what would come to the curriculum subcommittee, so.
Okay, I guess my fear is that I just don't want to jump on another bandwagon and then have our scores keep dropping because that is what happened, you know, as our scores have dropped. And I just, that, that's my fear.
Yep. So what I want to say is that we did, I've done some work with the middle school math teachers and I have looked very closely at the MEA data and at where our students are doing well and where they're not. And one of the things that we've identified is that some of the reasoning, the mathematical reasoning, explaining their thinking, those kind of things that are required on the MEA are not currently well-done in our current math program offering at the middle school. And so one of the reasons we're looking at illustrative math is that it's very focused on mathematical practices and conversation and explaining your thinking and applying the math that you're learning. And that's what the math teachers feel is lacking right now. So we're really having sort of, we're doing it from, let's look at our data and is what we're doing working? And if it isn't, what do we need to make it better? So.
And I, I agree with that, whatever is lacking in our data, but I also want to make sure that whatever program we implement, that there's data backing that up and not just like a new program and let's just jump on this because it's the new thing or we can get money because we're doing this. I just don't want it to be that.
The one we're looking at is, is one of the highest rated math curriculums around, so that's why we're exploring it.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Just to be clear, math is a problem in the state of Maine.
I know.
I'm just saying.
Katie?
Yes, Brian?
What is, what is our rationale for hardcover versus softcover? And, you know, as far as, I, I understand like a hardcover is obviously going to be more expensive, they last longer. And then as far as like textbooks and like, you look at college textbooks and they're, you know, their volume's gone and-
They're obsolete, yes.
In three weeks, it's obsolete.
Right.
So, I mean, I like the six-year value, but is, how many volume, you know, will, will the volume change and how quickly does that change?
What I'm hearing is it is both going to have hard and soft. It's not just a hard or soft. So I think they, that has been a big discussion, especially at the high school level, around textbooks and how much are we using our laptop resources, our open source resources? Absolutely. So I think that's going to be the discussion. Everyday math is a softcover for our K, for our grades one through six. Everyday math is a softcover. And so every year is a consumable. So you will see that under, you know, general supplies later, okay? So, but you're right, that's something they have to talk about and consider and, and when it comes to curriculum, that's something that they'll have to decide, yes.
Cover would, would be, you know, especially at the younger ages, they're going to wear out quicker.
Right, right. Then you'll also, so then you'll see there's $8,600 in softcover textbooks that cover our guided reading materials, our Zane or Bowser spelling. So some people were doing some copying stuff, that's not cost-effective, so we're getting the books, the softcover books. Then Lucy Cockens, you'll see $7,600. I've been identified to expand Lucy Cockens, which is also probably the top two. So both of them, the software, the softcover textbooks and lines, those two lines combined 15,000 is the spelling and books for, for classroom libraries. Then you have music. So these are things that are identified by the teachers on highest needs. So at the middle school, he's really looking for a keyboard that can do just more than piano, but really be on a company, whether it's drums or guitar, things that they can play in the guitar off a keyboard. So more, being able to diversify what they can do with just a piano, okay? Then you'll see a saxophone was identified. Then at the middle school in the tech, this is a STEM laser cutter engraver. Those are very big right now on learning 3D printing and so forth, and that's part of the tech group.
How many saxophones?
That's one saxophone.
They're $3,000?
They are.
Okay.
They are. I know.
How many saxophones?
Right, exactly. Yep.
Sorry. I didn't think they were that much. Okay, sorry. We all needed a-
And then you'll, you'll see it, East Auburn had a need for chairs, some stools and rugs. And then you'll see Walton, they have that autism, autistic classroom autism room, so they've been needing more furniture, a laminator, things to help support that program. So that totals 113,776. So of the increase in Cost Center One, you have that plus the staffing, okay? Going into your notebook, what we tried to put you in your other information is different codes so that you know when you see OO, it's undistributed, zero one is East Auburn, zero three is Sherwood. And when you look, you'll see that it's the last code in, and it's not in the first-
Be in the summary.
Yeah, be in the summary and the detail, that you'll see which school. And that's the last number in the account code. So Adam, will you share what they're going to, what they see in the next three things and how to read it so that you can have some time? You know, we can give you some time, work time here, or you take it home with you, however you want to proceed from here.
So the changes that we just went through, I basically went through the entire Cost Center and highlighted anything that was any sort of notable change, increase, decrease. But having said that, we've provided every detail of the entire Cost Center for you. So if you go to tab, the tab that says Cost Center One total, this will look very similar to the finance reports that you receive every month. It's summarizing the entire Cost Center by object code. So if you want to see teacher salaries or stipends all rolled up into one, that's where you'll see that. The Cost Center summary takes it to the next step where you will see every individual account number. So that's a 50-page report showing every line in the Cost Center, salary benefits and everything else. When you get to detail, this is how we broke this up. The beginning of that report, you will see all of the salaries listed out in detail by school, by position, name and dollar amount. What I didn't include is hundreds of pages of benefit lines, Medicare, Social Security, retirement, et cetera, et cetera, with people's names under it, health insurance. First of all, it's pretty much useless, but it also doesn't, you know, put names out there with what health plan someone might have.
Right.
So we did not print any of that detail. The lines are, of course, in the summary report, but you won't find that in the detail. So you'll see that it skips right from salary to non-salary, non-benefit items and then goes through all of the details of every line.
And you'll see notes explaining things. So principals work with their secretaries and, and they also work on making sure you had the notes to explain what was in that account.
And I just wanted to add one piece of information on the, those account segments that Katie mentioned, those two-digit. Those refer not just to where is that, but it's also what department is responsible for creating that budget line. So if you see the two digits at the end, 29 transportation, you know Billy Hunter's department put that line in the budget. If you see zero one, East Auburn, you know Sue Doris and her team created that budget line. So that's, that's to give you a sense of, of what department sort of is responsible for that account.
So you could, you know, we could have some work time for the next half hour that you just sit and digest it, write questions you might have on your sticky notes, highlight, you got a highlighter, you have a pencil. So why don't we just say, have quiet time for the next half hour?
Oh, sorry, one more thing.
Sure.
If I could add, because you'll see as you flip through these, you may see a lot of lines that no longer have a budget or were even used this year. We've really tried to do two things, be as accurate as possible in where we're putting everything. So over the last few years, I've moved some things to, to be in the best coding where it should be per the Department of Ed, but also things that we were breaking out unnecessarily. For instance, putting supplies by grade, by school, so that you had a supply line for every grade in every school and you just had pages of supply lines. We've consolidated that, so you have one supply line for each school, et cetera, to try to make it a lot more digestible. So those old lines will continue to show up until the prior two years fall off the books and then moving forward, it'll be a lot more concise. So I just wanted to explain why you might see pages of nothing. It's because you'll see prior year history in those accounts.
Three years prior actual, two years prior actual, what do we, so there's nothing for like now?
So thank you for asking that because I forgot to mention it. When you go to your deep, when you go to your total and your summary, you will see, yeah, so let's go back to the total or the summary, either one. You'll see-
I'm on total.
You'll see 17, 18 actual, 18, 19 actual. Then you'll see the current year budget, then you'll see current year spent year-to-date, then the budget request for next year, total budget for next year, and then the increase. When you get to detail and you start looking at the salary accounts, I can only put eight columns in the report and I have to grab the payroll column. So I dropped the current year-to-date actual and I find that if you're looking at a payroll account, year-to-date is pretty much a useless number anyways. It doesn't really tell you anything. I'm hap, if you do find value in that, I'm happy to produce another report for you that shows it.
This budget amount, or is this what we're asking to pay Mary Smith, let's say? That's what we're asking to pay that person?
Yes, so if you see Mary Smith, that is, that is, that is what Mary Smith will make next year per, per contract, yes.
They've all been moved according to the contract.
Yep, they've all moved a step. They've been given any degree changes, so all of those things that we know about are accounted for.
Every year, every year a teacher gets a raise.
And in EdTech.
Better than the medical field. Not that it's very good, but. Okay, thank you.
I had a note about sub money. I don't know where it was, I'd have to find it, but I wanted to know how much was left over, like how many unfilled subpositions were there? Not positions, but how many leftover sub dollars there were?
Last year?
Sure. I don't, I mean, I don't know. It was, it was just a question they had that it was budgeted for, I don't even know where to find it now. I'm sorry, I'd have to look for it. But yes, it was basically, there was money in a-
Leftover.
Yeah, there was money in account that was to be used for- Yeah, there was money in account that was to be used for substitutes. Is that money completely used?
This year or last year?
Last year, whatever we're looking at.
It's going to be in one of your codes, so let's go...
I can probably find that now for you.
We'll find it and we'll get, we'll get back to it. Okay, because that's in your substitute account.
And I noticed when I got here that these were printed so they don't flip in a user-friendly way, so...
Next time.
Thank you, Dave. We'll, we'll make sure that's corrected for next time.
I know.
So Rose, if you look at page seven on the summary... Actually, I paused. No, it's not going to show you what was left, it's only going to show you what was spent. I'd have to get you that number.
Okay.
And I can do that.
Yeah, I was just curious, each year out of the total budgeted dollars, this was what was left?
Correct.
Sure.
That's one of those accounts that's unpredictable.
Yeah.
And you're right, if you, if we can't fill a lot of the positions, you're going to have more savings. And if you can, and maternity leaves, there's a lot of factors that go into it. You're right.
And I'm just curious how the extra ten dollars per day for sub is, if that's going to make a difference or not. Lewiston has tried that, and it's increased a bit, but I know, because I'm regularly pulled the sub, that it's not the best.
Right, we're trying, yeah, Michelle can speak to that. She oversees the substitutes.
What's your question?
Nothing, I think it was more of a statement.
I think what it was, is Michelle said, "We have to keep up with Lewiston, or we're going to lose him."
Yes.
So it was a request to say, "Can we be competitive?"
Whenever, whenever we raise, Lewiston raises.
Yes, yes, we do play that.
Two years, watch out.
Yeah, exactly.
They'll be raising again, and then...
Right.
They've been doing it more frequently than that, it's been within weeks of ours.
Exactly.
Not even connected to the contract.
No, yep.
It's dependent, so they raise it whenever.
I'm familiar.
So, but yes, we interview every week. We do that in a priority. We look at those subs who may be applicants who may already hold certification, have already taught, or already subbed, and have good credentials around that. And we usually start with those to interview, and then move from there and whoever came in first or next.
Yes.
Brian has a question.
Yeah, what's on just page one of the totals? How does twenty-two line up with the account segments? It's the five-one-oh-two-two.
So those two-digit codes don't apply to that report, because you don't see those codes on there.
Okay.
Five-one-oh-two-two, just as an example, means Ed Tech two salary.
Okay, it's not the other...
They'll be assigned in the detail to location, right? He'll be, if you get them.
Yes.
Then they'll be assigned to a location.
Actually, you'll see that all of the, we can really get into some coding, I'd be excited by that. Because no one ever asked me about it. You'll see on all of the salary and benefit lines, that they end in a twenty-six, which means it's created by central office. But if you look to the left of that, you'll see other codes that tell you what school it's at. And you should also see in the account description what school it's at.
Thank you for what you do. Is that confusing?
Thank you, you're welcome.
This is a random question, but do we have, our school buses, are they all like standard, big school buses? Or do we have smaller school buses?
We do.
Do we have smaller ones?
We have smaller ones as well.
The reason I ask is because we had a swim meet at State's this couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And we had four students using a big bus. And the parents, and we were wondering why we were using a standard-sized bus to go all the way to Bangor with, what, five kids?
Kids weren't complaining.
No, they were...
They loved it, I bet.
Five kids, that seems a little...
I don't know the answer. I do know certain bus drivers like certain buses, so they're, they're very tied to their bus sometimes, and it...
Hard to get bus drivers.
Right. So...
Or did kids get transportation with their parents? So you have to make sure we had transportation for all of them? Yeah, there was, there were five kids, that was it. But the kids went with their parents instead, or they took their own vehicles?
No, no, they're five, I, I can see that happening if it's a bus driver who takes their bus, that's...
It's total went... Only five kids total went to the swim at State's. Okay, gotcha.
I can ask Billy Hunter to address that question, because I don't know the answer to that.
All I can guess, because I know when we've tried to move buses around, a driver says, "That's, that's my bus, I bus, I drive bus thirteen." So if they're going to go out on a trip, they might take their bus. So I don't know if it's, she assigns the bus to the driver, or the driver takes their bus. So we can double-check on that. That's the only thing that I can think of would be the reason.
It just seemed like a very cost prohibitive kind of thing.
And I don't know if Billy would say there's a different cost or not, so that's something to talk about.
And that would be something to know. Because it was on a Saturday, too, so I'm assuming that whoever the bus driver is is probably overtime.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
There's no difference, doesn't matter if you take... That's what I'm asking, or there's no difference?
Yeah, yeah, if there's a difference. If it's a big bus or little bus, I don't know.
Yeah, and if there isn't, then it's fine.
Yeah, and I'll ask Billy, because I don't know the answer to that either. But I'm sure you're not the only one wondering, so we'll address it.
Right, we'll find out.
The other parents were all wondering like, hmm.
Right.
Yeah, I've heard about that one.
Yeah, we've heard about that one.
On the totals, on page five, there's transportation, extracurricular field trip. So three years prior actual, there was nothing. Two years prior actual, there was nothing. There's six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars revised for this year.
Rose, which line are you on?
I'm sorry, transportation. Last page, second down.
That's an example of coding. So we had field trips in one line, then we've been adjusting where our field trips are coming out of.
Okay.
I know that, because you...
So it was someplace else, but now it's being decoded into...
This one also might be, sometimes we budget an amount for field trips. And it goes in that code, but we may handle it in-house, and the expense may end up in a bus driver salary and benefit line. So you may not actually see any expense there, but it's still an expense that we have to account for.
Correct, yeah. So sometimes, right, depends where it's, the expenditure is placed in, in the budget.
And so the one-year prior actual is what has been spent so far this year?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we've spent seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents on student recognition?
Yeah.
Four thousand three hundred dollars, should recognize more students.
And I think a lot of that happens toward the end of the year.
Yeah, no, you're right, yeah, they do. And we did talk about recognition and having their budgets be, so...
Probably stop making jokes.
Yeah, it's all right. Exactly.
By the way, I Googled saxophones. You can get them for four hundred and forty-nine dollars, the student version, on Guitar Center. So we can purchase five of them.
We'll check with the, the music teacher who submitted it. It's all right.
Just three thousand dollars, I was blabbergasted.
It may, it may be more than one saxophone, I don't know that.
Yeah. I also want to point out that those larger equipment items do go up to bid. We do an equipment bid, late spring, early summer. So, you know, we won't just run out and buy a three thousand dollar saxophone, it'll go through a bid process.
And also, it's a saxophone that's going to be used over and over and over again, so we probably can't buy the cheaper...
One of the higher quality, yeah, yeah.
Because it'll probably last a week.
But we'll, we'll...
We'll find out more about it.
We'll find out more, I'm going to write down saxophone. Exactly.
What are the dues and fees, Adam? What are dues and fees? What are those?
So in a general sense, that may be students' admission to go somewhere, or it may, in another cost center, it may be to a professional membership cost for a teacher or administrator to be part of a professional organization.
National board certified, is that in there?
We don't, we don't do that, no.
No, we don't have that.
But it's any, like, you'll, you'll see in the details, Pam, under dues and fees, when you get deeper in, they'll list what they do, like name principals association, the District Two chorus, there's a dues that goes, so that's where you find those.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It could be sort of a catch-all, you could see all sorts of different things under dues and fees.
How many open positions are there, open teacher and open Ed Tech positions? Because that's something that has to be budgeted for, right?
Open as...
Open unfilled.
Not new, but open.
Yes.
Yep, I'll get you that right now.
I know one teacher position is the gifted and talented teacher position that we have difficulty filling. That's the one teacher position. But we do have Ed Tech, as a matter of fact, Edward Little filled a couple recently, so we may be down. I know we have two Ed Tech positions open at RETC SOS right now. Well, one is anticipated, one is open.
Rose, are you asking about something that's open right now, or that's open in next year's budget? For instance, if someone's retiring?
That's open now, that we can maybe assume that it's going to be open again, that we still have to budget it for because it's already in here, that...
There's only a handful, but I'll find them right now.
Yeah, okay.
Gifted and talented, we, we will need two teachers next year, because our one retirement is in that as well.
I know, it's awful. We'll reprint those four.
Don't reprint.
Sure?
No, no, just as we go through the other cost centers, we'll just kind of make sure they're...
They were putting...
Please don't we, please don't use more reams of paper. That's, that's my general consensus. Eighty-seven, okay. I just had that, too. That was close. It's thirty off, it's no big deal. There's a seven in there.
We're talking about Chrissy's position in the pre-K. What would be the difference between the stiping and the full-time?
Be, be an additional teaching position.
Okay.
Because you'd have to replace her.
Thank you.
If you pulled her out, you'd have to put somebody in her class.
Yep.
Yeah.
I had a feeling it was something like that, because I know my daughter did all that.
Yeah, she is.
I found a misspelling.
We warned them.
Please don't keep track of them.
We, we, we warned them you might.
I'm, I did, but it's okay, I'm only kidding.
Thank you. Thank you for your understanding.
I think there'd be a lot more than misspellings if I was the one in charge of all this.
Well, that's the principals putting it, and the secretaries.
In everyone's defense, the box that you typed those notes in is like...
It's so tiny.
There's no spell check, if I remember correctly.
You can't spell check.
No, so it's...
Copy and paste. There is no copy and paste.
Did you know that the guy who created copy and paste just passed away last week?
Well, there you go.
Fun fact.
I can copy and paste.
I just saw it. Should be doing that right now.
Must be a math.
What?
I would ask this, because I know Peter's in the audience.
It's all right.
Age thirty-seven.
Which, the big gun one?
Detail, or...
Uh, summary, sorry.
Summary. Thirty.
What encompasses the OLT software at the elementary level?
That's the MobiMax.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure that was the...
You're right.
The reason for the variance.
That was MobiMax, yeah. What we did is if it's, if it was a district license, it went in her budget, and then other licensing's went to the buildings. So you'll see them in both places.
What's a marching band drill design?
That's what they have when, you know, for music, choreography. It's not free.
No, it's a thousand dollars.
Right, exactly.
Sorry.
No, yeah, any type of thing where they're looking, cheering, if they, if they get a choreographer or music stuff. As you started at five, I think, you know, at eight o'clock, we break, and you can always send us stuff. But, you know, give me another fifteen minutes, and then we'll... Oh, gosh, yeah, these are your notebooks. We're just sitting, you know, if there's something specific that you need right now, and then, you know, at eight we'll stop, and you can take stuff home, send us messages.
And all of these reports will be online tomorrow, too. I'm going to put them up in the morning.
This is a sneak preview.
Correct.
How do we access that online? I know that sounds silly, but...
On the website, you'll see on the quick links, yeah, on the, on the website.
On the very front, there'll be a link to FY twenty-one budget.
Under the quick links, probably, yeah. Because that's where the others are. We have the history of our budgets are there.
How would you see about supplies, like school supplies, that you have a supply budget, but how would we be able to know if they spent it all, if they needed more? Like where does that come from? Is it, do they, are they budgeted enough?
It's all in the general, they, they budget what they need. So all the building budgets are different.
Yep.
They don't get an allocation. They calculate what they need. So you'll see under the details...
It will line it out to like colored pencils.
Yeah, you'll see, you'll see the details.
And you can see what they spent the last two years and what they've spent so far this year, so that'll give you a sense of...
You just probably haven't gotten to it yet, Rose. Yeah. I mean, we're very clear that we don't want to hear that we don't, we didn't order pencils and markers and things. So they're very good with their staff to ask what they need.
Rose, answering your other question, there is a grand total of five unfilled positions in the whole budget that are currently unfilled.
Not a huge number.
Correct.
It's not a big dollar.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a lot.
Across the whole budget, there's five.
Across the entire budget.
We're fully staffed as bus drivers, not going like... How?
Yay! I love my bus driver for my, I love her. Just take her home, have her baking some cookies. What is the printing and binding needs that cannot be handled in-house for Edward Little? What is the printing and binding needs that cannot be handled in-house for Edward Little? Ten thousand, almost?
Oh, we pay Edward Little to do our printing.
Okay.
But there's a line for things that-
Right.
They might not be able to do.
Right.
I'd have to look and see what we've used that on in the past.
I was just curious.
We have used, like last year, we had to tab things. We don't tab, so we went and brought it to be tapped. Trying to think, what else would we do? For the new EL project, we went and made, we had posters made. But a lot of, most of our printing is done through Edward Little.
Okay.
Rather it be done there than at Kinko's.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Definitely using our own resources.
Absolutely, that's right.
And we, we do, whenever possible, we do use in-house. It should only be if either the person couldn't do it because of time or because of-
Okay, so I guess that would be my question, not like, why is this money being spent? But why can't we spend it in the, like, what do we need to, like, use it in Edward Little? Like, is there, is it a little machine that's less than that? Like, what's, how can we not spend that money but spend it within-house? Like, for supplies versus services? Does that make sense? Okay. I just didn't know. Yeah, there's like a bunch of it.
So it's amazon.com, amazon.com, what's that?
That is the secretary listing the vendor that they're buying things from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that doesn't tell you too much other than who the vendor is.
Like books, often get it on amazon.com. Cheaper, yeah.
Yeah. Now, how does it work with tax IDs and that sort of thing? Like, I know I've run into this at Lewiston, that I needed to purchase something for a group and it was more expensive on Amazon, but because, like, I couldn't go and buy it at like harbor freight, because even though it was cheaper there, they didn't have a tax ID code for harbor freight, because it wasn't a certified merchant or whatever, so...
So, just to answer a little bit more than what you asked, we, we bid out our supplies every year. We've had WB Mason win the bid several years. If it's on that list, it has to be ordered from WB Mason. If it's outside the list, it's, it's free game to shop around and find the best-
Okay.
-deal. And whenever anyone buys from a, from a local vendor, we always bring the, they always bring the tax exempt form or make sure that they're set up for tax exempt. And I would say it's been very rare that I've found a business that won't honor the tax exempt form.
Okay.
But we always make sure we do that.
Okay, so I guess maybe the situation was a specific vendor that have already been contracted right that month that I couldn't, yeah, okay.
Rose, I got the answer for your, what would it cost in EdTech to have a family plan this year currently? The employee share for the year would be eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So they just shouldn't work.
Because that's the difference between eighty-
Full salary.
Five percent of a single and one hundred percent of a family health insurance.
An extra eighteen thousand dollars.
So then essentially, an EdTech that has two kids that is working, even if they get just single, they'll still be work, living and working under the poverty line. So that our EdTechs, if they're a single parent, they are living in poverty.
Way under.
Way under. Okay.
That also is the employment they chose.
Yep, no, I agree.
If that's something they-
I understand.
You know, you know, yes, I agree, I, I hear you.
It's maybe more of a systemic issue.
Exactly.
Just, I don't know how to make, I don't know how to make it better, and I think more like the public needs to understand-
Right, yeah.
-that as well. Like, I, our budget is made around taxpayer dollars, so people don't understand that, you know, family comes insurance and, because we don't have the money to offer, you know, adult with family, it becomes a bigger problem.
Right. And of course, that is collectively bargained, because the EdTechs are part of a union.
Yes.
It looks like people are winding down.
I'm winding myself up.
I know what I'm doing on Saturday.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah. So next, next workshop, so bring your notebooks back, because we're going to be adding to the, to, so you'll see Cost Center Two next week. Ryan is preparing his presentation around special education. And if you have any questions that you hope we're going to have information either the next meeting or the week, meeting after, please send that, okay? Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Anyone in the public like to comment? I don't, it's all administrators, and Alfreda, Alfreda might want to.
I think she stepped out.
Oh. All right, so no public participation, all right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.